Okay, uh, welcome to the April seventeenth meeting of the Thurston County Planning Commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a resident advisory board to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters such as the comprehensive plan and zoning ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public, community members are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. We welcome public comment on those topics for which a public hearing has not been held. My name is Derek Day and I serve as the Commission Chair. I reside in District One and we will continue our introductions here in the authority. Commissioner Bartley, start with you.
Alright, I'm Colin Bartley, I'm representing the district.
Bill Fishburne, District Four.
Evan Tastinger, District Five.
Scott Nelson, District Four.
Barry Halverson, District Two.
Eric Casino, I serve at large but lived in the Lacey UGA.
Andrew Kaiser, District Three.
Daniel Paul Parker, District One.
Alright, thank you. So next, um, we will take a look at our agenda. And.
Move to approve the agenda for April seventeenth, twenty twenty-fourth.
Thank you, Commissioner Halverson. Second. Alright, any discussion? Alright, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any against? Alright, with that, the agenda is accepted. Alright, have folks had a chance to look at the meeting minutes from last meeting? Alright, I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Alright, any discussion on the meeting minutes before we vote to approve them?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pestenger.
I apologize for not reading these interventions, um. I'm a little lost, I'm looking at page two, at the end of page two and then looking at page three. I thought we had made a decision. To pull. Remove. Historical stuff and to insert references such as Lacey Historical Commission documents such as. I don't see, is that reflected somewhere else? I thought it would have been there.
Should be in there. I was looking for it and wanted, and tried to make sure it was clear for our staff because the Historic Commission is working on it. They're gonna essentially replace that.
There's stuff about that in lines thirty-nine, forty, and forty-one, but it doesn't say what we talked about even making a motion for. I guess my question, do we feel that needs to be more officially in those minutes or not?
We have the.
Do we feel like the right thing's gonna happen? I'm not.
Yeah, we have the full record and if staff feels like they have the direction they need from the full record.
See some stuff on page four, lines eight through seventeen may cover it.
I'd look you all to see if you feel like you have the.
We definitely, it's underway, so.
It's on page four, it's, it's.
Yeah, I see it there.
Yeah, it's just not in the same second because it happened after that discussion.
Right.
Thank you.
Alright.
May I ask a question as part of discussions? So we added the attendance record and the follow-up requests. Is that in a format that the Planning Commission feels comfortable with? Okay.
I, I think at some point when we adopt new rules of procedure that there'll probably have to be a differentiation between. Excuse, unexcused or planned or unplanned or however that language initially falls, but, um.
Good for now, right? For now, yeah, just having an excuse in parentheses seems to work.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Alright, um, all in favor of approving the meeting minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, with that, our meeting minutes are approved. Alright, um. Moving on to public communications, I see we have a couple of people online. We've got one hand up. So I think we'll start with folks online, then were you planning on providing public comment? And then we'll move to the boardroom. Alright, so I think. So I'll just read this here, but for those, um, please raise your hand if you are interested in providing public comment. Um, you'll get three minutes, um, and we will have staff promote you to a presenter.
Um, did you call my name?
Yes.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay, I, I'm, um, Loretta Sepenon, I'm a resident of Olympia, Washington. I'm speaking tonight about the capital facilities chapter and I'm gonna make three requests, uh, um, of the commission. Um, specifically in terms of how we, uh, think about the growth in the services and, um, facilities that are gonna be needed in the next twenty years, which is what the chapter really is about. Um, the draft chapter is framed in terms of population and how much growth there is going to be in terms of the entire county, including the sixty percent of people like me who live in a city. And that fits with some of the services that, and facilities that the county has, like the one you're sitting in, and the courts, and probably the parks as well, but it doesn't cut, it doesn't, it's not, it's not the right metric or, um, uh, number to be thinking about when we're thinking about, uh, roads or, uh, stormwater or the road maintenance facilities, uh, which are really services designed for only the UGAs and the unincorporated rural areas. And, uh, be- because of this different needs, I'm asking first of all that, um, you, you have some disaggregation of the population figures into three buckets, I'd suggest. One would be the UGA, one would be the unincorporated rural areas, and, and the other would be the cities. And those three numbers, they add up to the total, which some of the services are designed for that exact total. And second, it would really help me to have a chart there near the beginning of the chapter that described how the various services are paid for, who pays them, and who is served by them. I did need to hunt in outside documents in order to figure that out. I don't think I've figured it all out yet even. Um, and now the second, the third question, the question I, thing I want to raise for you is when you do the disaggregation, an issue's gonna pop up. And it, it has to do with, I last heard that planners in the various jurisdictions have agreed to a distribution of future population that has sixty percent new growth in the cities, twenty-eight percent in the UGA, and fourteen percent in the unincorporated rural areas. That's nine thousand more people in the, more than that, in the unincorporated areas. As many people in the next twenty years in unincorporated areas as Yelm, and it's way more than the five percent goal of the sustainable Thurston project. And so I want you to be thinking about that. I think we need to plan perhaps for, for what we're already assigned for in the unincorporated rural areas, but also plan a, a project that looks at the five percent and what that would mean for future growth. So thank you for considering those three requests.
Thank you. Alright, anybody else online who would like to speak? Alright, it looks like that's a no. Okay, that will move us to the boardroom.
Good evening. You guys are a great group of people. I'm John Pettit. A very active citizen here in Thurston County and I never miss a meeting hardly. Sometimes to the regret of planner, I'm just teasing you. But the, but the fact is, is that I, I find your particular group to be extremely important in the process. And we'd like to all think that commissioners are, are all knowledgeable and everything. Somehow they got elected so they know everything that we need to know. Bottom line is. They know very little about specifics on many different topics, so they're dependent upon people to be able to analyze and look at the things and, and break it down a little bit better. We have a new county manager now and I think that will help. But one of the main topics which I am concerned about has to do with, um, gee, I get for, for it to go to everybody, thank you. One of the things I, I'm very concerned about is, of course, the capital, uh, improvement plan. Capital Improvement Plan, because I basically am very highly number crunch oriented to everything. And I've been watching and analyzing the county's finances, uh, the capital improvement program. I've watched how something comes here and then suddenly something over here is happening. And one of those funds that's been suddenly diverted, REIT one, real estate excise tax, has been diverted over to be making bond payments, which that isn't the way the law works. It works that, that's supposed to be here for capital improvements, projects. So, that all being said, I, uh, I think that it's important that you as a group should be supplied prior to undertaking of any analyzing of the projects. Yes, finances is part of the process that the comprehensive plan refers to in your decision and recommendations. You, that is the basis of how many projects should happen, what should, where, and everything else is based upon finances. And I have seen in the past that, um, I've seen people that think that you guys should be here to rubber stamp whatever staff may hand to you. And I'm going to encourage you, stand up and, and make your voices heard, participate. I appreciate you're here because if you don't have enough money, you have to stop. You have to re- reassess and redevelop your plan in order to fit within the standard. The basic plan is always twenty years to six-year basic financing plan to take care of the projects that you're looking at. And if you don't have a plan to pay for it, I don't think you really can. So therefore, it's kinda like going to a restaurant. You don't go just order anything on the food, you kind of figure out what's in your pocket before you, before you order your food. What are you willing to spend? Well, uh, revenues have gone down as far as in proportion to what they were hoping, so there's been a lot of drop in revenues. Cost of building everything has gone up. And so how do you, you can't even use what the old plan was at this point and think that you're moving forward just by, oh, it, it was good last year. No, we don't know what it is. We need to have, maybe staff can provide you with some hard numbers for estimated costs and such for these projects and revenues that'll be available. So, good luck.
Thank you. Eric, you love to ask a question, clarify a question. Uh. I have no idea if that's out of order.
You know the rules and procedures better than anyone.
I have no questions of your half.
Really, just for clarification, um, I don't know enough about the revenues, but isn't the main source of revenue, uh, taxes based off of real estate assessments and aren't real estate valuations going up? How could revenue be down?
Okay, so, quick education from the financing part. You have multiple funds which are designed specifically for collecting capital for capital projects. REIT one, REIT two are spread out to being a, a main source, but you also have detention sales tax. You have, uh, even the new public safety sales tax would have some available funds coming in. So there is sources available. And then ultimately, there's also a general fund which the county may choose to obligate towards a process for bond payments or such. But, once again, you need to know the figures and how, how it's gonna work and I would suggest, uh, there's some good available information from the previous ones. And as I would tell you, like I tell the commissioners, like I tell any of the county, I'm always happy to kind of show you more than I know about it, but I want you to be educated because part of the process, part of the comp plan is that you make consideration about the available funds and whether you have to cut a project because you don't have the money for it.
Thank you for clarifying. Do you have an estimate of how much the revenue's down?
Uh, I don't have an estimate on all the different revenues. In fact, right now, they're, they're choking at the county trying to figure out what the impact is of a new housing market. And the reason why is you said prices are going up. Many of the taxes are not related to the price of the houses, only with the sale price when they sell. And if you don't have any houses selling, you don't get to make very much money. So you've gone from what was an eight million dollar figure down to about three million dollars over the last couple of years with each one of the REIT accounts.
Thanks, and we appreciate the extra, the extra information.
Feel free to call if you need to.
Alright. Okay, um, did, we have, did you want to provide any public?
No, nothing for us, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for joining us. Alright, uh, anybody else online change their mind before we move on? Alright. Well, moving on to new business, we have a work session, number one, for the less restrictive alternative community housing.
Share my screen, this is my first planning mission, so bear with me as I navigate the technology. Just. While she's doing that, just to remind you, this is the one that, as we chatted about at the last meeting, because it's so narrow in terms of what we're able to do, um, at a local level. We have gone ahead, as you log the packet, and provided draft code amendments without having kind of a conceptual.
Um, good evening, everyone. My name's Anna Rodriguez. I'm a planner here in community planning. And like the chair said, this is a work session on less restrictive alternative community housing code update. So today's work session might be brief, um, but gonna start off with some background and how we got to where we are now. Um, then dive into the draft code a little bit. Like Ashley said, you were given Title Twenty in advance, so that's what we will be discussing. Um, and then to close out with next steps and timeline, um, I will just preface and say, if the Planning Commission is comfortable and direct staff to schedule the public hearing in advance, um, but I will leave that up to your discretion, of course. And then at the end, I welcome any questions and comments that may come up. So like I said, how did we get to where we are now with some background? Um, RCW seventy-one dot zero nine was amended in twenty twenty-one. Um, that bill amended section point zero nine seven, which pertains to the placement of conditional release facilities. Um, that amendment added pieces to allow for contracted private facilities to serve as a less restrictive alternative to total confinement. So up until then, the RCW mostly just went into detail about state-funded and state-run, um, facilities, and so that amendment addresses private contracted facilities. Um, you all are probably familiar with the LRA facility that was proposed in Toninno around this time last year. It was supposed to accept one resident and then did not. Um, that event and also the amendments in twenty twenty-one to RCW triggered, um, community planning staff and, uh, in collaboration with the prosecuting attorney's office here, um, to look at our code and see what needs to happen. So our code, um, these four titles include information about the publicly run, the DSHS operated facilities, which are called secure community transition facilities. But we do not have a process for private facilities, and so that's why we're here today. Um, after that assessment and things of that sort, this was a project that was docketed, um, item number A thirty on the development code docket, which was adopted in April.
Anna, just in a rough, could you please give us a little capsule description of the furor around the, um, April twenty-three LRA proposal? For folks that might not be aware of what happened there. I was here, yeah, Anna, Anna's our newest planner too. Um, the, uh, so essentially, uh, there was proposals to put it in our facility. I was headed to Toninno in a rural area that was on septic system. Well, um, no notice to the community. I mean, they, they did find out, there are a lot of news articles about it, um, so I think they were definitely concerned.
Just a house, didn't tell the person they purchased it from, what it was for.
Yeah, there's, and I didn't, I didn't realize that part of backstory. Um, from the county's perspective, a lot of the concerns that arose were you're essentially operating a, a, a business for all intents and purposes out of a single-family residential home that is not equipped to handle multiple residents, like the septic system isn't equipped to handle multiple residents. Um, and I'll get in to like the restrictions at a local level around land use, but we don't necessarily have restrictions around like building life safety, and that facility needed a lot of upgrades, um, before it could handle a use like this. And we can, you know, also perhaps address some of the noticing requirement or noticing that the community would like to see. But if you have more backstory, Commissioner Pestenger.
It was a big deal in the legislature too.
Yeah, and that, so our board, um, was looking at two tracks, the legislative track of getting updates completed, and then also directed staff to look at what we could do, um, in the interim. Sounds like it did not pick up steam in this last session, but it's on the legislative agenda for at least Thurston County's board in the upcoming session to revisit it.
Uh, I know we, I mentioned this previously, and I know we can't change like state language and whatnot, but is there, I find the language "community housing" to be very misleading and unclear. Is there anything we can do locally to change that name?
Unfortunately, based on just how state law refers to it, they actually refer to it as less restrictive alternative community housing. To truly conform with the definition of this facility, we need to maintain the exact language. Obviously, with any materials that we produce that are more of the public facing, we can kind of tweak the name a little bit.
Can we use that name and add, you know, some clarifying language or something?
About what, what it is, and, and we saw that in docket, like we had docket comments, I'm like, what is this? This sounds good.
Uh, I was just gonna say, uh, if we have some sort of definitional document and we chose our own term and defined it as meaning that thing, could we not then use that term throughout the rest of it, knowing that it's defined as a reference to another thing later, all throughout the chapter?
Good.
So if we said, we chose a term that we felt was more accurate and we put in statute or however we want to do this, in local code, a definition stating this means this. Are we violating any rules by doing it that way? Uh, we would be compliant because we would say these two terms are equivalent.
The, the, the wheels that are turning are more for permit staff and doing, and, and that, and that trail, you know, making that connection between what our local term is and how it relates to state. It doesn't mean we can't. I just, if I'm pausing, it's because I'm trying to think of other considerations.
I was just trying to, 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 to pestenger's point about whether we could use our own term.
Yeah, this term, it feels maybe, maybe.
Willfully obtuse.
People deserve to know.
Yeah, I guess, uh, I hear a little bit of the conversation going on right there, uh, but, uh, I'm curious what, because it seems like this would, inevitably, anything, anytime we change verbiage or add definitions and adds work to staff. So I'm trying to figure out what the, like, what our goal is there to justify that work? Um, what is it about the term that we don't like and what, why we would want to change it? Um, I think it's useful to have that stated.
I think it's about the public understanding what we're talking about when like a less restrictive alternative community housing issue comes up. What does that really mean? Because it is pretty obtuse for the public, like to know that that equals, you know, sexually violent predator housing.
Would less restrictive alternative community housing mean anything other than what we all know what it means?
Yes, I, when I looked at it just quickly, I was thinking, oh, are we talking about the new effort to create more streamlined regulation that will allow the building of more houses in Thurston County? That's the first thing that popped in my head.
Affordable housing initiative.
But is there, is there something other than violent sexual predator, sexually violent predator community housing or communal housing? Is there anything other than that that LRA, uh, would fit?
I would hope that you should just say.
So this is a definition that we have currently, part of it. As some context.
So that itself does not even state, uh, that we're specifically talking about, uh, sexual offenders. Um, and it does actually kind of get into some of the other things that I was thinking about. If we're talking about formally incarcerated, folks, there's a lot of reasons that you might have been formally incarcerated that make it hard for you to get housing. And that lesser, less restrictive alternative community housing would be a useful term for. That was where I went when I first saw it, was I was like, oh, this is like when we're talking about making it so that people can get access to shelters who might not otherwise have it because of, uh, uh, incarceration history. And so that it's, that it's very narrowly referring to, uh, people who have, uh, been convicted of sexual assault is meaningfully different to me.
Just wanna say, specifically, I believe this applies only to level two and three sex offenders, not first level sex offenders, so.
It doesn't say that, though.
Well, sexually violent, uh, predators are the third level. That's their official.
Does the RCW say that?
I'm, I'm fairly certain. I was looking into this last week, but I could, I could be mistaken. I'm pretty sure that particular term, sexually violent predator, is the term for level three. They're considered by the state in statute to be most likely to reoffend, which I think drove a lot of the community concern. Particularly around the safety, the proximity to things like, um, playgrounds, parks. Um, there are rules that restrict them near schools, but not all other kinds of things, and I understand why the community would be rightfully upset about something like that coming in without notice to them.
Commissioner Bartley.
And just to sort of bring this back to, like, what we're, why we're talking about this, like, I think there is a balance to be struck here about making sure that we're not being euphemistic, that we are being descriptive in our terminology, while also not being either sensationalistic or marginalizing. Like, the justice system has decided that these are folks that are, uh, able to, to some degree, live in a less restrictive environment, prisons. And I don't wanna, I don't wanna effectively create a second prison for them outside.
No, but the question, yes, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
The question to me is, what offenses fall into this category?
I'm very curious about that.
Okay, and it doesn't state what those are.
Yeah.
And I would, if I was a citizen, like the citizens of Toninno, I would want to know what this covers.
Yeah. I think that's a reason.
And right now, we don't know that, and it's not in the code.
So, one piece to add, sorry to interrupt, uh, part of the ordinance that we put forward in consultation with our prosecuting attorney's office was a line that they must provide the agreement, that the contractual agreement between the private entity and the Department of.
Social Announcer.
Yeah, sorry, I always forget that acronym, um, to show exactly what that facility be used for. They have to show that they are meeting all the criteria. And I do believe, uh, that they do kind of specify what the facility will be used for, not maybe the level of detail that each crime that will be happening there, but I do think it goes into certain security metrics related to the offenders that will be there.
I understand what I'm talking about is in our document setting out what the offenses could be.
Take those levels.
Correct. What are the levels of crimes that could be, that could fall underneath this? Because right now, no one knows. And I, I agree with, uh, Commissioner Kaiser. You look at this and it doesn't jump out at you as being anything dealing with an offense or one that was less restricted than going to prison.
Sorry. Trying to listen and then.
I have, I have a question. Oh, sorry.
Commissioner Bartley.
Um, even this language, so is this from the RCW? Okay, I, I was very troubled by the last clause there, and it says, and maybe, may offer twenty-four hour staffing and train escorts, or may not.
Who knows?
So, again, you know, it's like obfuscation of, well, what, what is happening here about? I mean, I know we can't rewrite the RCW, but maybe there's a way to get more transparent for.
And I apologize, and I know you have a more of a presentation to give. Um, I've been, I, like, at first I was thrown off by the community housing part of it, but I even find the less restrictive part to be very confusing because I thought that meant less restrictive in terms of rules for building the housing or setting up the housing, not less restrictive as in that's the type of housing is less restrictive. For building the housing or setting up the housing, not less restrictive as in that's the type of housing is less restrictive than being in jail.
Yeah.
So, so there's a lot of confusion about this terminology.
I, I, I have a lot of the same sentiments as a lot of the other folks in this room, but I think that. Part of the problem here is how this is codified is probably different than how this is explained to the public. And the codification probably needs to follow along what the state uses. For the most part, but I would hope that the county would also implement a public information campaign, maybe it's something on their. Screen that instead of saying click here for less restrictive alternatives, it's click here for violent sexual predator housing. You know, and I don't know if we need to make a connection any more direct than that, but um. I, I, I would hope that the county's. Public outreach on this particular issue is very apparent, even if we do stick with code that is much more in line with what the state has put forward.
I, I did wanna confirm that sexually violent predator is not. Is not um one of the categories of people that would be authorized for this housing. It's. The court has to determine that they're no longer that. Well, no, because it, at least, well, when I, I'm reading R C Ws right now, trying to.
Nine eight right now.
It says like if the court finds they're no longer that predator, it, a predator, they could be. Considered for less restrictive alternative housing. So it's an offender.
Yeah.
Rather than. So sexually violent offender, someone make sure to. But it's confusing.
Well, the. The R C W on this is really, really long and has a bunch of clauses based on age that, yeah.
Yeah.
Would we be interested, I mean, it sounds like there's, there's some. Conversations that we wanna have about changing the, the, some of the terminology around here, making this a lot more transparent. I am interested to hear a little bit more about the process that we have going on here. Could we perhaps uh come back to the conversation about whether we wanna change the name after we hear the presentation?
Sure.
I, I raise this, I feel like staff has heard us. Sense the concerns and. Rest it as much as you're able. I'm good with that.
Backtrack one slide, and then we'll go back to the definition. It's like Petrus, but PowerPoint slides. Um, yes, so for some context on state policy. Um, as I mentioned, secure community transition facility, they're the operated, they're operated by D S H S. So they're state-run, state-funded. They have twenty-four hour intensive staffing. They provide treatment services. So for example, McNeil Island, that's uh the most notable. Very large facility, there's over two hundred residents at any time, but it can hold up to four hundred residents. Um, these. These facilities, that's how I'll use it since we haven't determined the name that we'd like to move forward with yet. Um, these facilities operated by a private provider. Would be significantly smaller. So think of it in the context of adult uh group homes. Um. Maybe eight at a time, but the likelihood of there being more than one or two is slim, given the distribution of counties across the state. Um, and they may offer twenty-four hour staffing and trained escorts, but like Andrew said, um. There are requirements that we've included that they must, these facilities must show. Documentation that they're contracting with the S H S, and so there are requirements that the S H S and the Department of Corrections require. Um, so while it says may. It's not set stuff.
There's a big difference between may and shall.
Yes.
Talk about that a lot.
Can we make that a condition?
Instead of it being may, just solidified that there might be.
That, that use is conditional upon twenty-four hour staffing and trained escorts?
Or is there a preemption? I, I believe there would be some hesitancy for the prosecuting attorney's office because it is. Pretty well baked in that these facilities may have that option or may not. And I think obviously the, the residents will dictate kind of that reaction. But that's all under the guise of uh Department of Corrections and the Department of. D A, the S H S, sorry.
I, I know we're very early in this process. We still haven't done public hearing or even thought about a recommendation yet. But before we get to that point, would you be able to run it up the chain with the prosecutor to see if we could change may to shall? They think of that?
It seems within our jurisdiction to say like these facilities may, may like, these facilities on a larger, on a larger level. May offer this staffing. Our zoning says that if it's in this area, it must. Like that's, that's within our, 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 our purview with any business.
We, we can make the recommendation to the board to change may to, to shall.
Yeah.
I just wouldn't wanna make that recommendation as, as soon as it got to the board, they talked to the prosecutor and prosecutor's like, no, you can't go, but you can't do that.
I, I would still wanna do that. I don't care what the prosecutor thinks. I think that. Said under the guise of that law, it's, it's under the guise of the profit motive and that. Organization of a private provider is always gonna seek more profit by its nature and more profit means without.
Yeah, compelling.
Sorry, last thing, like, yeah, I, these, these people are getting like three thousand dollars per person, like, they're going to be. Like this is a money generating uh operation for them. We saw that in the last one. We saw how, how, how willing people are to cut corners when they have the opportunity to, and that's not good for the community. That's not good for the people this housing is for. Anything that we can do to firm that up in terms of zoning, that's, I feel like our.
Uh, I would like staff and any commissioners, please chime in if you agree with me. I was told that McNeil Island is getting ready to close. And that is one of the reasons that the state has gone to an L R A community housing process across the state. The cost for McNeil Island has gone way up. The transportation of guards and stuff from by ferry back up forth to McNeil Island is cost prohibitive right now. The I, the facilities on the island are substandard and they're deteriorating and they're not doing the improvements that they need. So I was.
Controversies and lawsuits.
There are.
Very expensive.
Yes, and I, so I would just ask staff, and, and we need to have commissioners vote on this. To find out if that is in fact true, uh, it's more than rumor from where I'm getting it, but I just wanna make sure. Uh, and that's why they're going to this L R A community housing so that they have a place to put these folks. And that is not comfortable to me.
Well, thank you for entertaining all of our discussion.
It's a formal presentation. It's meant to spark discussion. So I. I have no authority to tell you no anyway, so I'm wanting to listen and, and take this as well.
I'm taking no.
And reading R C Ws. Okay. I'm comfortable moving past the definitions. I feel like we had a pretty decent discussion so far on that. Okay. Um, changes so far. So you were given title twenty and it has the uh definition and. Use specific standards and whatnot that I'll get into in a moment. Um, those are duplicated across titles twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. Those three titles, if you had an opportunity to look at them, are all structured differently. And so the way in which they're integrated into those titles might look different, but it is in the same, the same appropriate location as given the structure of each title. Um. These facilities, it will be required that they have a special use permit on the hearing examiner, which triggers specific noticing. Um, create a new definition, as you've already seen on the previous slide. Um. And this, these changes also permit these facilities across residential and commercial zoning districts. And they have use specific standards relating to fire and life safety.
Clarification is bullet two is requires special use permit from hearing examiner. This is a change. What was it previously?
Well, there wasn't anything. So it's maybe changes are the best way to describe it. It's we're ensuring that this type of permit. Does require hearing examiner so that it does have that noticing that the community uh requires.
Not conditional, but special use. That's the highest level.
They usually take at least a year, if not more, and it's, it's an expensive, long process. Um, just so you're fully aware.
Wish I wasn't as aware of how the hearing examiner process works.
So to speak to those use specific standards, um. They're required to for these facilities and the things that language you've added in the code, they have to adhere to the requirements in the R C W. Um, I will note, um, in conversations we've had with the prosecuting attorney, um. State law supersedes local jurisdictions, and so the way we've been trying to approach this, I say we. The approach was before my time, so uh Andrew and other staff with the community planning. Um, is that to ensure we have a solid process so that our code can actually be used instead of overshooting and it. Causing a big mess and that gets us back to essentially where we were before, but there's just language in the code that can't be used. Um, and so that's why we keep. Pounding on, we're trying to adhere to the R C W. Um. Additionally, um, these facilities have to possess approved public water supply and wastewater, um. Disposal, yes. By zoom is blocking off my final word, I apologize, as well as possessing a food establishment operating permit, since they are essentially like a commercial business in a sense. More so than a residential home.
When, when you say possess approved public water supply, does that mean they gotta be on city water? It can't be on a well?
It can be either. It's just must be approved by the health department.
Okay.
Yes, so everything that's in these use specific standards, um, is just required by, is what is required. It's outlined by what is required. I apologize, it's late. Um, and then lastly, of course, conform with any adult building.
Yeah, ba- basically, for those of you familiar with what goes on in the B D C, treating it like a change of use. So when it comes in, even if it was built in a single family home, our building department is gonna look at it like it's a change of use to a commercial operation.
Next steps. If you would like, we could have the conversation now, um, that you all wish need to have at the end, um, rather than go into timeline. Plus, you can see it on the screen, um. There will be a public hearing at some point. At some point pending planning commission, recommendation and final action.
Yeah, in this one, because we have no standards today, is the, this is the reason why this, the first thing we're bringing into you, um, from our docket. Um, is because it would be great to have standards on the books.
I, I know that I feel uh very comfortable about this whole proposal, specifically because of the special use. Permit and the hearing examiner. Um, and I don't know how everybody else feels, but if you guys had some proposed motion language, I'd love to see it.
We were that presumptive.
We just had a public hearing for, and what was the date that we, we were to go from today?
If we were to.
Can we wait on that a few minutes? Do you wanna go first?
I was just going to say, I, I found the list of offenses that qualify for a sexually violent offender. If people are interested, it's under R C W seventy-one nine twenty. It's section eighteen. Offer to read it, but I know that might be potentially triggering for some folks, so.
So you mentioned, we've mentioned that we heard a lot of public feedback. Some of us heard a lot of public feedback from the Tonino incident. Um, obviously, there has not yet been a full public hearing on this, but. Is there anything that we've learned from public feedback that would be worth us being aware of now before this public hearing?
I think the big takeaway is the lack of knowledge that it was coming. And so I think the aspect of including a hearing examiner requirement, which does come with a notice on site. Mail notice to adjacent property owners, uh, a legal notice and. Might be one other, but I.
Public hearing.
A public hearing, yeah, thank you. That's, that's a critical one.
They also mentioned the notice to the property uh that they're purchasing it from. Or there was something about the type of business they're gonna be operating.
There is, well, the, the notice for the application would include that, because it'd be a change of use essentially. We, we are treating this like a change of use. Now, in terms of like the seller knowing, we can't.
Sorry, Andrew, I didn't mean to. We just wanted to clarify.
And this, that would trigger in the case that it was going from residential use to a commercial use, what if it was already commercial use?
Well, it's more like the building code requirements, um. That, that's an easy example of like residential to commercial, but even if you're a commercial use, let's say you're an office.
Yeah.
This is different than an office use, and so it would just trigger whatever requirements the building code, not even the land use code, but the building code. As for a change of occupancy.
Okay, so what if the, the current use already met that criteria? Couldn't?
You, it's still a change of use under land use.
Yeah, I'm confident the land use will catch it and most likely the health code will catch it as well. Because if it's going from any sort of commercial to a residential, even though it is a commercial activity. There are specific requirements related to residential that a commercial building just simply.
So there's the land use, so the land use layer with the special use. Is what is gonna trigger all the noticing, the public hearing and the hearing examiner review.
Okay, so we're pretty confident that none of these had slipped through the cracks?
Is they have to notify us. I mean that they're doing it.
And one of the requirements with, uh, it's corrections or health. Um, does state that they are meeting all of the requirements, and that's part of that contractual agreement that they have with the state. That says, are you meeting local requirements? And part of that would be, have you had your hearing examiner or has that process been initiated? Um, for them to be able to sign off on that.
So the state should be a partner in this, like the state should be notifying us if they receive applications. Um, so that's a piece that, you know, fingers crossed is happening.
And then I, one last question. So if we're thinking about like how much leeway we have as a county to make. Code beyond like compared to like what the R C W says, is there an enforcement mechanism if the county decides they wanna go? Like, let's imagine that the county wants to go crazy restrictive, fly in the face of the R C W. What's the enforcement? They appeal it, um, and the applicant.
The applicant. So, so what just happened to Kitsap County?
Yeah.
So Kitsap County restricted these to only industrial zones in an attempt to. Try to. Limit, limit the scope of them. And there, I think you found out there's a recent case that was just decided.
So it'd end up in front of a hearing examiner again anyways, or we'd go to.
It was a superior.
The Pearson, what's that?
Pierce County.
Oh, Pierce County, okay.
Business was not Pierce, but ultimately the.
Doesn't go through the hearings board?
No, not at that point.
Okay.
And ultimately, the Superior uh Court did find that you cannot restrict the location at which those happen. They are part of the Washington Fair Housing Act. And you can't say that certain groups can only live in certain areas, so it must be treated equally, and that's part of the locations that we included. Are all the zones that allow for residential.
Groups of people living somewhere, this is about businesses operating somewhere.
Both.
Alright, thank you.
I was gonna say, yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's both and specifically, it's both in the sense of like, if you're, if you're forcing people to live on a. An industrial zone, there's a significant. Risk to their health. Um, you know, there's like, there's a quality of life aspect to it, which is why it has to be less restrictive than the otherwise. I'm interested in how this is different, how this would be different for, for folks who are otherwise like. Otherwise residential in, in similarly restricted areas, like, I mean, I, I'm imagining, uh. The way that Airbnb should be restricted, be uh coded zone versus how they actually are. Um, but like other things like that where you have, uh. A residential, a, a residential system, um, that can be just switched who's living in there to this. Your residential business system.
It's like an adult group home.
Exactly.
So as far as our land use code is concerned, our special use table is like. How many pages long? Adult group home is a different use.
Thank you. That's, that was my question.
Just wanted to point out that the term less restrictive is actually defined, and it means anything less than total confinement in R C W, so. We say less restrictive, literally anything less than total confinement is considered less restrictive. It's kind of a very broad euphemism.
I guess my biggest thing right now is, and I don't know what we can or can't do with this. But what about citing requirements?
Citing.
There's no, there's no citing requirements that, in what we've received.
Are you talking about as far, uh, for like distance from specific things? That is in the R C W.
And that, as I've mentioned, that the contract they must provide actually has to address all of those and. Prove that they are meeting all of the citing requirements uh and conformance with uh the Department of Corrections.
And, and those include like distances. And and those include like distances from schools and things like that.
Yeah, the. The restrictions themselves are actually pretty big, the conversation is mostly around McNeil Island itself, but it does get into. Uh other facilities as well, it's it's in the RCW.
Well, I'd like to hear from the public on this particular issue sooner than later, because I'd like to move this forward. I I think us not having any real answers on this leaves us more open than I would like to be, so the sooner we could. Kind of muddle through this, I think the better off we'd be.
I agree, I second that.
May fifteenth, it's when we could do the public here.
As opposed to June fifth.
Okay, well, then I would move that we set a public hearing for May fifteenth to hear. The public's testimony on the less restrictive alternative community housing up. Code update.
Do we need a motion for that?
I I made him, I moved and.
I'm just wondering if we can just do it.
Kevin seconded.
All right, um the motion is moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call. Okay, go ahead.
Uh which is, there's the balance of making sure that we get through this conversation fast enough and that we have. Notice that is sufficient for people to actually participate in this conversation. Is there any, is there any desire to have it in secular later dates, we give a longer period of notice?
I thought about that as well, I kind of mean that way, June fifth is the next option, right?
I can provide.
That's two weeks.
The timeline of the noticing that we would do, if that's helpful. The the first thing we would do is this Friday, a legal ad and a web mailer would go out. Um and then in just a couple of weeks, on May third, we would send out a press release. Um so there would be a couple of weeks notice, but if that's not long enough, then of course, I defer to you all.
If you're open to that delay of two weeks, I'm in agreement.
I guess I would look for feedback on what additional outreach you'd like us to do, we don't have.
It's not additional outreach, I don't think, I think it's additional time for the community to think about it and prepare.
I guess I wanna hear the, I wanna hear from the community and giving them an extra couple of weeks to think about what they're gonna come in and say isn't. As near as important to me as making sure that they know they have the opportunity to come in and say something. And so I think that the public outreach and the the noticing that the county already does probably satisfies that requirement if somebody wanted to. Tell the county to put out some different flyers somewhere else or do some other notification, but I'm I'm fine with that. But I don't think that it's going to take the difference between three weeks or the difference between five weeks for somebody to come up with their argument for or against this particular issue, so. I I don't see the point of delaying the public or the public hearing.
But it's not three weeks to them, I'm sorry, it, we just said they would get public notice on my, May third.
Two weeks.
From May fifteenth, that's twelve days.
Know that. The legal ad would go out this Friday, so the first notice would be this Friday.
And that's, I mean, today is four weeks to the fifteenth.
So, and the web mailer would go to over a thousand people.
I I think we should be very thoughtful about the way this whole issue has been. Perceived in the past, and I think the community in Tonino felt like they were being rolled. And so I think it's really incumbent upon us to tread carefully and 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 with maximum. Transparency and opportunity to speak, so as much as I would love to wrap it up. I do think it would be prudent for us to give people a little more time. To understand that there's a opportunity here, it's could be one of the most contentious topics we ever deal with in this commission. And then the fact that the, one of our current commissioners is a former mayor of Tonino, I mean, there's just, you start tugging on the threads here and it. It's a big deal, so I wanna make sure we make the right choices, maybe we get answers about some of the questions that we've had. And that we, by postponing a bit, I think we have a better chance of resolving some of those questions.
Would you start your noticing, if we move this to June fifth instead of May fifteenth, would you still start your noticing now? Cause I know we have very set schedules on how we do noticing, so you would have to change that to start your noticing now, even though it's, but no.
We can start our noticing early, we would probably still wait for the press release. Um and work with, we work with the PIO's office up in the boardroom or for the board. So to your point about being careful about how this is rolled out. But though, they usually don't like to release those until you're closer to the hearing, otherwise people just forget about it.
That's fair, then then I would move, I would move to amend the motion from May fifteenth to June fifth.
All right, are all in favor to amend the motion? Any names? Okay, motion amended.
Can I ask one question? That being said, next planning commission meeting on May first, would you still like to have a work session where you look at twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three? Um or.
And we're gonna revise definition?
Yes, or just I guess guides on how you would like the next work session on this to look.
Scott probably knows this better than anybody else, if we set a public hearing, but then we keep on working on it before the public hearing happens, do we have to? Does that throw the public hearing off because we started going through material other than what we already told them to come forward with?
I cannot, the issue I would see is if we change something.
So we probably should have the work.
I mean, we don't want to, I don't think we wanna put the notice out Friday this week. And then come back May first and have a meeting and change it. Because then people are gonna come to the hearing with the wrong information.
Then a work session, you don't make changes, right?
Sure, can.
The public hearing draft, so I think that whatever, so the public hearing draft. Is what will be attached or sent out and referred to. If you could still have conversations about it, but that draft doesn't change until after you've had the public hearing, so we can still take your feedback and then. Integrate it as we're integrating in the public comment as well.
Yeah, I would be very interested in that for exactly the reasons that. Commissioner Kaiser mentioned, like, I would be very interested in us being very prepared for these. So I'd like to have that work session ahead of times that we can be in the headspace once we actually start this, to be able to comfortably engage.
So here's a thought, um if we're to start noticing this. We could notice that there will be a work session, right? We could put out extra, basically extra notice. I think maybe we should try and put out notice that isn't, you know, the planning commission is gonna take up the LRA code amendment, it's gonna like. Figure out how to be much more clear about what the subject is and push that out via notice like. Put this on people's radar. And then do a normal um public hearing. Kind of noticing schedule, so we wouldn't notice the public hearing like on Friday. We would notice the next work session, and then after that work session, notice the public hearing, even if we've decided to do it now.
I I I understand where you're going with that, cause I think even on our agenda of where it says LRA instead of this is sex offender housing. It wouldn't bring as many people in as if we said it was sex offender housing, but I think that if you did your. If you start your public notifications now about a public hearing and say, and we're also doing a work session on. May first, and we're doing a public hearing on June fifth. If if you can incorporate that into your public noticing.
We have lots of different communication channels, and if the intent is to. Have people tune in, um we can do that, so we would, no one. Well, I don't know many people who read the tiny little print on the legal notices, so we'll probably hold off and post that. But things like web mails, the things that people are actually opening, clicking on, that's where we can be a little bit more robust. And we can explain kind of what this is. Um invite and invite people into the planning commission conversation early in preparation for the public hearing on June fifth.
Okay, so I think our motion still. Live and fits what we're thinking about.
And you are challenging us to do. Good, robust communication, thi- this is a hard one, you really have to get. So Jolt News follows the board stuff very closely, and this is something that would go right into a Jolt News article. They don't follow us closely with the planning commission, and that's really where you get folks starting to engage, and so. Uh we'll do our best, but it might be one of those things where it's not until it gets to the board um that you get that broader. Broader coverage. It's great to provide the opportunity, oh, yeah.
We wanna.
For sure.
Try our best.
And I wish it would, it would happen at this stage when the planning commission's working on it, but.
I don't know, some of us might wanna write a letter to the Jolt Editor, but um was there any more discussion? Before we vote, all right, let's do a roll call vote. Go ahead, could you call the role?
Commissioner Bomberger? Commissioner Fishburne? Commissioner Kaiser?
Aye.
Commissioner Bartlett? Uh Commissioner Casino? Commissioner Albersen? Commissioner Nelson? Commissioner Pesenger?
All right, motion passes. Thank you for inspiring this robust debate.
Thank you for your first.
And that was just the first one, they're all gonna be just as fun.
Did well in the deep end pool. All right, um well, with that, we can move on to work session number twelve. For the Thurston forty-five capital facilities, chapter six and utilities, chapter seven.
For those of you who are done SMP, we're like, are we gonna get up to the same number of work sessions?
How high did that go?
I'm trying to assume SMP is Shoreline Master Plan.
Sorry.
Sorry, I think Senior Medicare Patrol.
All right, I'll take it away. Well, I just wanna introduce myself, Andrew Bond, Community Planning. Uh this will be kind of a tag team presentation, I will start out with capital facilities and Anna will end with utilities and the remaining slides. So as I just said, we will be going through both the capital facilities and utilities uh in this presentation. We're just generally looking for ideas, feedback, thumbs up if you're liking the direction we're heading. Um any feedback you may have in a different direction, uh and followed by next steps and kind of what uh the schedule looks like for the coming meetings. So the capital facilities uh chapter is pretty standard, it's going to be a lot of the statistics that relate to the capital facilities that you see in the county. And so what the public works staff and central services staff tried to do were to think kind of like future. What what are some of the issues that we're facing? So one of the big changes that we saw added were new critical issues. Some were funding, others were just climate change. Moving on, we had uh had some revisions to our updated county plans, a lot of things have changed since uh the last. Update to this chapter, uh as well as new plans have been added since their adoption. Uh we're also looking at updated data, figures and statistics, um as well as some revised codes and policies. To overall align with the goals and policies of Public Works and Central Services to make sure that their goals in the future. Uh align with the county, and obviously, there's a lot of clerical and formatting changes that you'll see throughout that chapter.
Utilities. And similarly to all chapters that you've been seeing, a lot of just basic updating data and clerical and formatting changes. Those aren't the fun parts. Uh in the utilities chapter, um I'll talk to the pub, the county pieces first, revising the level of service standards for. Solid waste, stormwater utility and water and sewer, that was done in partnership with um the relevant folks in community planning as well as um. Staff within public works, um as well as updating information about the private utilities. Puget Sound Energy updated their integrated resource plan in twenty twenty-one, and so using that to update a lot of the relevant data that. Not relevant anymore as it's outdated, but updating the necessary information within this chapter around uh Puget Sound Energy's electric and gas. As well as updating goals and policies, and that's an ongoing conversation. Just about a week or so before this meeting, I did circulate the chapter to other folks within community planning who are more. In tune with water and stormwater and things of that sort than I am, and so they're still talking about those things.
Thank you, uh you go back to that part you just said about Puget Sound Energy and Gas, what was that? Because it's not listed on.
The section about private utilities in this chapter mostly only calls out Puget Sound Energy, electric and gas, there's mention of broadband. Um and standard telephone, but those sections are have really shortened uh over time. So the meaty parts of the private utilities piece pertains to Puget Sound Energy.
And is law county at all, or it's only the cities?
I actually don't know the answer to that, but I can find out if you don't know.
The second T and.
It it it's a separate entity that, yeah, I mean, it.
Tom water treatment.
It exists as its own entity.
Yeah, it's its own municipal or municipal corporation.
And always profitable, strangely enough.
We um didn't receive many comments on these chapters, these aren't the the more important uh. And meatier topics than what you would typically see, but we received two comments. Um I did have the thing in front of me, but the comment sheets down there, uh they mostly related to climate, I believe, if memory serves and. One other one, uh paper's down there and I blinks on it.
Yes, the, for the most part, the comments that the, they've pretended to making sure there's adequate integration of climate resilience and mitigation. Um I will say I did look earlier, I think there are a couple more comments, but I think considering Ms. Seppin spoke earlier. They hopefully reflected, so I'm pretty sure that she provided those in advance at the meeting. And as far as engagement goes, uh county staff here, we worked with public works, they gave a lot of really great. Comments and revisions and uh Puget Sound Energy, they might be listening, um I do know that they're going to provide written. Uh comment for the record on this chapter so that we have that, um but they've been great so far and working in partnership with them on utilities.
I find Loretta Seppin's comments very insightful, um it sounds like she's sort of writing in addition to speaking today. Uh what do you think?
I think that um she always gives great and insightful and articulate advice and feedback, and I know that I'm going to go back and look at those. Because I think that that's an interesting way to approach the chapter, um my background isn't with utilities, and so I've been. Viewing this at this stage of this chapter, feel free to talk on your chapter if you want, Andrew, I jumped in. Of updating what we have, and then I wanted to receive feedback from you all and whoever provides public comment to see how we can maybe. Think more future forward with the chapter, um but.
She said her comments were about capital facilities, but in retrospect, it sounds like they were both capital facilities and utilities related.
In many counties, these two chapters are one, um but here they're separate.
I think the one piece we'd wanna look into is just make sure there's consistency among the chapters and how we refer to demographics, and so just making sure that we're consistent. Um and that may maybe shift in that direction, or we have to maintain it or make notes of it within that specific chapter.
I know this kind of ties in with the level of service that um this Seppin brought up, but. In prior years, we've had a commissioner here, Commissioner Carmen, who really harped on the idea that we do not do road set asides, and it seems like. And I'm not sure if this should be chapter seven here, or it should be in our transportation plan, or if it should be, you know, something that. TRPC does, but. Maybe road a set, road set asides are something that we should think more heavily on than. Are currently in chapter seven as, well, there, I guess, chapter six too, because roads are capital facilities.
I think it would fall on the transportation chapter.
I think so too, but I think so too, but.
I I also do think it would all more to TRPC since they look at the region holistically. As this would just be primarily for the rural county and uh.
Area that I particularly agree with uh Commissioner Casino on this is uh runoff. Um from roads, which is the main issue that. Um, from roads, which is the main issue that uh.
That's a chair day thing.
Aside for like i- is is one of the 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 main infrastructural components that we're we're dealing with here. And that seems, there's a lot of really interesting stuff about runoff treatment in here and.
That's all gonna be in the DDECM though.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're keeping. If that we're keeping some level of consistency and and we're keeping that that larger vision in my mind comes to to runoff management, since it's mentioned.
It's renewed redevelopment.
And I will say that the stormwater piece in particular, there will be more updates too. It the the timing is gonna be difficult, so at the same time that we're doing this with you all. Um, going through all of the different uh updates of the chapter, Public Works is doing a stormwater comprehensive study. We also just um uh got notice that we were able to secure funding. To do a very specific like climate data effort around stormwater. I am not using memory as well. Um, but like. Clear Creek Solutions is working on this following. Um, so. Mr. Day can speak to it, but yeah, and so it's like these on these efforts are happening uh in parallel. When they sort of come back into the comp plan, we're hoping by September, October this year. Um, but yeah, more to come on that in particular. Um, things are underway, and so we tried to put like placeholders in there. But um I'm excited to see what ends up being.
Also, I appreciate what you're saying, Andrew, about TRPC looking at the county holistically. But I would not go that far to give them that much credit. I know their task with doing that. Which I served two terms on the Transportation Policy Board. You know how long Chair Rider has been the chair? Board like he runs Lacey and we've talked, I don't wanna throw Lacey under the bus again, but I do live there. Don't think the county should aggregate its oversight of that.
I second that. And so we could look when we get to the transportation chapter, which happens to be my chapter as well. Uh, uh, with consultants and public works, uh, to look at maybe establishing a goal. Or um some sort of task that we can look at doing over the next couple of years to see if that's an option for us.
Are you uh, are you ready to take some questions on? Captors?
Yeah.
Okay, sure, Dave. Go for it. Cause I I got a few things about not so much utilities, but capital facilities I'd like to get some answers on before we get too far. And couple of these are simple, one of them's a little bit more difficult. But on the first one, I was having a really hard time on critical issues. Um, it was the the one that reliance on economic conditions to obtain funding through impact fees associated with building permits. And we know that impact fees aren't allowed to be used for M and O. And only for new capital facilities, so I guess I don't. And it even says later uh that impact fees must be used for expansion of level of service. And not later, it says that on page six twenty-two, which makes perfect sense to me. What are the um economic conditions then? That are going to be impacting these capital facilities since you're not able to use this for M and O anyways?
I think it's more of the uh the expansion of facilities to meet newer developments when there is a slowdown in overall building. Those impact fees just don't come in like they would at a busy time. And so there could still be things happening where that need is there, but that funding source is just not there to extend a road. Or build it out to meet the level of service needs of that.
Like the impact fees aren't high enough?
Impact these are one piece of the funding source for a lot of transportation projects. So it won't solely be impact fees, but it will be partially funded from impact fees. And the rest will come from either the county road fund or other funds.
Systematically, impact fees are usually lower than they should be because.
I think so too. I I guess that's where I was getting at is.
Now, it's a proportionality issue uh for those fees. And if the county has to defend the fees every time, if they're pretty close to that level, it becomes like.
Fair friend with you, I don't, sorry, I don't know this better, but all those developments that have started. Uh, and you see like streets laid and pipes put in, but they haven't started building houses there. When do the impact fees come into effect?
They do it when they are SDAP ready, don't they? Soon as you get, or maybe with final plat approval, that's when they collect the the impact fees.
There might be two parts. It'll be probably part of the subdivision on the infrastructure piece. And then they'll be tied to the actual residential or commercial development that takes place within that subdivision.
Sort of the main lines, then connected.
Okay, uh, my my next one was on objective one C environmental impacts, policy one. It looks like, and I don't know if you're able to bring it up, it was on page six six. It looks like you are moving from unavoidable in that adverse impacts. Uh, will be mitigated to unavoidable adverse impacts should be mitigated. And going to it should be mitigated is concerning to me. I think that if you are going to have unavoidable adverse impacts on environmental impacts. They absolutely need to be mitigated, not should be mitigated.
I might be a novice to this. Um, I don't know how much of the policy part of this chapter, chapters or six that we're allowed to change. But I noticed that when we're talking about finances, it's what the county will do. When we talk about the environmental impacts, there's a lot of what we should do. Um, I do write policy sometimes for my work. Policies generally are not.
They're not binding.
You should, yeah, yeah, they're they're already, yeah, it it doesn't feel like a policy if it's saying a bunch of shoulds. It's saying it'd be nice if you did, and that's, it's slippery.
I I get that part, that policy is not definitive, it's not code. But by by lessening the impact, by putting in a should there when the should wasn't there before. I I just don't feel as comfortable with that.
I I have issues with the existing shoulds that haven't changed in a lot of the environmental chapter. I I feel like it's, if this is serious, no. The irrevocable consequences of climate change are closer and closer every time we iterate this. And when we leave this couched in. Should, I mean, these things become more pressing. This is for twenty forty-five. I guarantee that Thurston County community members in twenty forty-five are not going to be thinking, oh, well, at least we should do that. It will be imperative for them then, and if we have a future focus on this, we should be considering stronger language. Even understanding that these policies might not be fully binding, but we shouldn't also downplay them with conditional language like that in the first place. That's just my piece on that. I like shallow and practicable in these cases. Yes.
And I second that, but I third them.
I I don't, I I I appreciate you were that specific example, and I expounded a little extra, a little. I think we should evaluate a lot of the shoulds, particularly in uh public land use and in environmental sections.
I agree, um, especially in, yeah, just for the starting in one and two in one C. I want those those to be will toward.
Maybe this is all a question about how policies are required to be worded. I don't know, but.
They use will in other parts.
Yeah, that's what I thought too.
Different pens and it probably is different pens. But what I'm hearing is that in general, because this sounds like something that's like a scrub across chapters. That we should be less conditional.
Yes.
Policy should not be. Let's not ask to mitigate.
Yeah, we will mitigate, and it's up to us to, it's up to the county to determine how much we do that, how well we do.
This particular instance, it's on the county's own development for the most part too. So if anybody's gonna be held to the highest standard, it needs to be the county.
So I also, I had one thought about one B. So we talk about a lot of reasons. So we have the environmental impact of capital facilities. Um, we haven't really spoken to, I think, in one B, capital facilities planning in the policies. Policies for capital facilities planning for the purpose of environmental protection. And I think we could stand to have a policy on that point as well. Because right now, we mostly just talk about it's, you know, it's, you know, concurrent and the size is correct. That's a great idea. But also capital facilities planning for environmental protection. Oh, I have a couple tiny formatting things. If I was a public member trying to navigate some of this. When we reference tables like six or seven pages later by a number and a letter. Um, if the if we're formatting these as PDF, source word documents, we should be able to link within the documents. It would be super helpful if you saw a table referenced, you could click it and go to it within the document. Cause I saw tables referenced and it was real hard for me to find them. So I'm just saying, from an accessibility standpoint, from the public supposedly being able to use and reference this, that would be very helpful.
And you'll have to accept my apologies on me kind of getting up on my soapbox on this particular one. But and I know that a lot of you've heard this before, this will be my fourth year of harping on this particular issue. And what brought it up is objective one F, financing policy five. Addition of new facilities to the CIP require formal amendment to the comp plan. I absolutely hate the way Planning Commission does the CIP. I think it's utterly ridiculous. I think it is um. It is the closest thing to rubber stamping that the Planning Commission does. Um, I would, I personally would like to see us either do deep dives on CIP. Which would be very time and resource intensive and might not even be possible. Cause most of the time when something's the CIP, there's already been a ton of staff work that's already been done. And if we can't do that, I think that we should seriously consider getting rid of CIP from the comp plan. Not leaving CFP alone, of course, because that's state requirement, but taking appendix G. And just removing it out of the comp plan and having it as a standalone document. And by doing that, it would take the Planning Commission out of the loop of CIP. And we would then no longer be taking a three hundred and fifty-page document with hundreds of projects. For fifteen minutes, talking to fifteen different people and then rubber stamping it. I don't know if you guys, I don't know if staff is able to take CIP out of comp plan. But if you can, I would, I would like it if you could look into it to see if we could be done. And if it could be done, we should seriously consider doing it.
Mr. Bartley, just for clarification, your goal there is to remove the illusion of uh oversight.
Illusion of approval from the.
And I.
That strongly.
Yeah, and like, I don't know if you guys saw this in December of this year. The board approved a resolution that they can amend the CIP without Planning Commission approval anyways. So the whole thing just feels like theater to me, and if it's gonna be theater, I don't wanna put my name on it.
I second that.
Worth doing, it's worth doing right.
That's exactly right. I think that my solution is suboptimal. I would prefer that we actually get to go through and do everything, but that would be hugely resource intensive, so I understand why that might not be.
It's an annual update, which I think is why it has been so hard. Like as soon as you're done with one. It you have the set schedule and it. To even meet.
So.
That schedule.
So I, and I don't think that staff has done anything wrong in that. I don't think, I I just don't think that this was very well thought out when it was originally put together, so.
I think it was well intentioned to like.
I think so.
Part of the comp plan and like, yeah, we'll have. A broader public process, but what it's turned into is like. It takes months for Public Works to generate the lists, and then we basically are just on this track of like. We have to get the the briefing done here, the hearing done here, so we can get it to the board on time, so they can approve it by the end of the year, because they can only.
Cause it's approved with the budget.
Yeah, and I think that the Planning Commission's main job is for public oversight. We are the the first rung on pub- public oversight. We're not doing that in this particular case, so if we can't do it, let's consider getting rid of it.
I will say, based on past, we had to do a a research project on past CIPs to find ones that went back to the early two hundred, two thousand, two hundred.
Making me feel real old right now.
What we found was in two thousand nine, when there were no planners in community planning after layoffs. It had to go with budget, and it was never gone through the normal comprehensive plan update that it does today, so.
In other counties.
And other counties don't go through.
Well, I know that as an individual planning commissioner, I can't direct staff to look into doing this. But hopefully, the rest of the planning commission would at least entertain the idea to ask staff to look into getting rid of CIP from planning commission purview.
I agree.
You guys smell emotion, I second it.
That was a motion.
All right, any discussion? I was just gonna say, I I haven't experienced this yet. Um, it sounds like having this here means that the public concentrates at least some of their public opinion and comments. On this to us, even though we have very little ability to affect it, given the amount of time we have to deal with it. So it sounds like taking this off of the planning commission helps the public direct their commentary where it's going to be most impactful. And I think that's the appropriate decision.
I think that's true, especially because in.
Right.
The prior years we've been here, we have not had any significant public comment on the CIP in general. We get a little bit on the CFP from time to time, but CIP, nobody comes in and says anything about CIP.
If it's not on us, then it's on some potentially something a little more high profile, and maybe it gets the attention it deserves.
And of course, there's still lots of other opportunities for public input on any of these projects. It's just running it through here seems like theater.
And you will get a chance to experience it, because you'll. On the calendar for this year, but just to be clear, if this change was made, it would go into effect when the comprehensive plan is updated. So you we'd still have two years of reviewing the CIP.
Wheels are in motion already, so it's hard to stop.
Yeah, we have a motion on the floor, and um I'll call for the vote, all in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
All right.
That's all I had on apple facilities or utility, so I'll get out my.
Nobody else wants the soapbox, I'll take it. Um. I have one thought on, I'm not sure what the order of precedence here, I think it's a section for the capital facilities summary. Um, it has sections A through F. And each of these is kind of its own silo. And one of the, one of the things I see, like honestly, in my work is that. These aren't as siloed as we like to think they are. They they overlap. And I think it would be great to see a section, um, an additional section. On um multi-benefit projects and planning. So I think about things like um road retrofits for stormwater upgrades. I think about um the ability to fund stormwater parks. Um, there are all sorts of uh kind of overlapping um. Pieces of these plans that I know are really difficult for, you know, for a lot of times for internal. Internally for jurisdictions to kind of figure out like whose it is. And like, one of the things we've seen um with things like stormwater parks is there's this big, like, not my department game that people play. Like, is it Public Works? Is it Parks? Like, whose job is this? Um, so I think if we had some uh some discussion of and hopefully goals and policies. Around some of those kind of multi-benefit planning at least, and then funding hopefully. I think it'd be really cool to see something like that.
And to clarify.
Yes.
Are you looking for a section that describes the? The the existing projects, are you wanting us to establish a goal that directs us to start looking at more projects that have? Those multi-benefit or both?
Yeah, I I think we'd wanna push, I think it's the latter, and we'd wanna start to push some of the departments into thinking like that. And having comprehensive plan goals and policies, I think.
And one other thing I think we could also do with that, because obviously this is just kind of a summary of all the capital facilities. And then there's other chapters that have more focused approaches, specifically parks, for example, which is over on. Uh, that's something we can also look to see if that's a a goal that they can associate with any of the transportation or uh other utilities.
Yeah, I think I would embed it also, but I think if we had something here that was its own section on like, you know, we treat these as separate. But in a lot of cases, these Venn diagrams are overlapping, it's not like completely concentric.
I'm sorry, uh, could you uh briefly describe like what? So what I'm hearing is that we're here, we're we're having a lot of folks who are uh are a lot of situations where stuff isn't being implemented. Or isn't doing it appropriately, because people are sort of passing the responsibility on. So if we had a comprehensive section that sort of talked about this at one unit, you're suggesting that that would. Incentivize departments to work together on that or clarify where, where that fuck should be stopped.
That would be my hope that it would hopefully incentivize it. I don't know how much like writing something in a plan really incentivizes things, but. Maybe it sets an expectation that departments should be not playing these like. Not my department games, which happened in all bureaucracies. This is not a function of Thurston County by any.
I was just gonna ask the, on page six dash twenty-three, the definition for public safety taxes, it's not put in there, it says it's going to be added lately. I mean, they passed that tax with a definition that that went out to the voters. Are they changing it?
No, I'm waiting to hear back from the finance staff for the appropriate definition that would go into the comprehensive plan. They have a very detailed definition, but when we actually think of capital facilities in the CIP, we don't go into that level of specificity. We kind of keep it more overarching. So when you look at like REIT, for example, there are technically two REIT, but when we discuss it, it's only just REIT. And so they're going to write it up one and submit it to us.
Tax the same way. Yeah, exactly. Well, this one was. Near and dear to a lot of people's hearts because it was very specific and the county commissioners could not take money out of it for other uses. So I'm just interested to see what the definition is going to be.
Okay.
You were saying something.
Oh, I think for there, there is more discussion happening around. One water concept. So essentially seeing the connections between groundwater, stormwater. Streamflow, all those different things. And so. Hopefully, like we do have a planner on staff that's specifically looking at that, like water policies and having them sprinkled throughout. In the appropriate chapters. So you might see more of that in the future, which I think gets at this, you know, things are connected, even if you have separate departments or separate divisions within those departments working.
This is a Geller initiative?
Sorry?
This is a Gelder initiative? Okay, because Kitsap.
Yeah, they did that. And they're actually running into challenges. So we've been having a lot of conversations with them about the stumbling blocks that they have faced.
I heard that from them today.
In seeing how we might address it.
Along those lines. I, when I'm reading, was reading through today's homework. And we were talking about, there's parts in there talking about planning and buying up resources early. If, if we know that there's going to be, we want another park somewhere, we're going to go buy the land for that park or of course, along those lines. Where in any of this would water rights fit? And how can we, I, I, I know that the, I'm concerned that the county is not going to have. Right now, it looks like we have enough water rights to meet the demand of development that's going to happen over the next twenty years, but. That's a, maybe not. And so where in this plan do these water rights fit in?
So I can't, I will have to look back and see, but I didn't speak to the CIP. There is actually line items specific to the acquisition of more water rights. And it kind of goes across the board. There's the ones for water rights. There's ones for new, either conservation lands or parklands. Same with right away for roads and things like that. So they are specifically line items within the list of projects that. Public Works considers.
And then those will be held as a CFP asset? Okay.
It's twenty-three and twenty-four.
There's also, you'll, you'll also probably be seeing policy. We're working on them with. What will become the Water Resources Advisory Board, the currently SWAB. Purchasing water rights for like a locally held or managed water bank. Help mitigate for drought, help encourage conservation subdivisions, so more. Taking a more active role as a county. And, yeah. Managing.
We make a policy or can we recommend a policy that. William Shatner cannot pipeline our water down to California?
I'd second that motion.
This gets at something I've, I've been thinking a lot about ever since we had that. The conversation about the Nisqually area. I've been thinking a lot about the, the way that land is needing to shift over time. And needing to shift over time. And this seems to fall into a lot of these conversations about acquisition and we're talking about parks. Obviously Nisqually itself is not a park that we have. Meaningful jurisdiction over, but. We're, we're building S2RIs downtown in downtown Olympia. Thank goodness. A lot of that conversation is, but like. A lot of, a lot of that work that we're doing is for, a lot of the preservation work, a lot of the restoration work is on land, is soon to be underwater. We've talked about this. And. I was wondering what like, just in, in general, like when we're talking about acquisition, can we talk about acquisition in ways of like. How we're moving our parklands, how we're moving our watersheds, our, our, like the, the, the stuff that we're, we're preserving here. As these resources are getting flooded, as these resources are drying out, we need to have something that's a little bit dynamic in that regard. A little bit forward thinking in terms of like. Okay, this is the area that's preserved. There's farmland that's adjacent to it that we're going to have to be considering as where this salt marsh is going to have to move. Or where this. Watershed is going to have to, we're going to have to be, we're going to have to be generating forests to generate water for us.
I want, I'll write down that thought, but if you could reiterate it at the next meeting when the consultants are here and they start introducing this concept of. Like what the vulnerability, the climate vulnerability assessment will include. So I think that's when you start weaving in those pieces, like if the utilities and capital facilities chapters are really just like here. Here's a population projections and here's how we're going to size our facilities. It's sort of identifying the risk associated with that and then addressing that risk. And I think that's. Those are very insightful and completely appropriate comments to share with them. Like this is. And I have already brought up Nisqually as a really. Yeah, a good area for them to focus their attention with the changing landscape.
Thank you.
I totally agree with Commissioner Bartlett and I raised this as well previously about sea level rise and. The city's talking about expenses for bunkering facilities and things like that. I mean, it's incredible planned expenditures. Sometimes they're talking about building new ones that'll need certain things that don't make sense to me, but that's a different story. So, yes, let's please consider that as part of this update.
So I've got one for section seven, page twenty-two, talking about the policies for water sewer utility service. I know we're talking mostly about sewer utility service, but I also think about like what we're, what are our policies for. The unincorporated areas. I don't know if it makes sense to include them here, but I do feel like generally when we think about septic and unincorporated areas, there's a massive failure of imagination. And we think about the ways that we, we, that we. Manage. On-site sewage. So I think if we had a policy in here that was about looking at innovative approaches for onsite sewage outside of the urban growth areas. To protect resources, I think could be a really. Could be a valuable thing to at least start kind of moving the dial on. I think about things like, you know, we. You know, we use onsite septic systems pretty much everywhere and we don't use composting toilets. There are so many different ways to manage. Wastewater in shoreline areas that were just complete failure of imagination. So. I don't know if it makes sense here, but I also thought it might make sense to talk about. In this goal for drinking water in sewer, the risks to treaty protected resources, like shellfish that come from wastewater.
Second that too.
Anything else? Okay.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mentioned multiple times, public speakers have mentioned now this. Where we're crossing lines and use a REIT. We got an answer from the staff of how they feel about that?
Could you repeat that, please?
The use of REIT for things that are not necessarily legal.
I, I've never heard. I've never, the only thing I've ever heard from county is that they are in compliance, but we also know that. The state auditor's office is going to be issuing findings at the end of the month. I don't really know what everybody else thinks.
We would have to have someone from the budget office because see. Community planning, CPED doesn't.
Yeah.
Doesn't have access to REIT funds.
Sure. Defer to the state auditor's office on that.
Well, I think, I think we are going to hear something from them about that.
All right. Okay, anything else before we move on?
I thought that was going to go overtime. I think we're under time.
Well, the one thing we can add is at our May first meeting. We will be coming back with our housing and climate analysis. This will be with our consultants. It is a very detailed presentation that. You will be very informed after that presentation.
Send us a preview. There's a lot of slides, but as we were trying to figure out what to pull out, it's like. But you probably want to see them all. So I would just encourage you to treat the presentation. Slides as your very detailed memo when you get it. And so.
We're getting them. And sometimes we, we only see the slides once we're here.
No, you'll, you'll get it. They're trying to get it to us early because there's a lot of dense information in there. They will be going over. Housing and climate state guidance again, especially for those commissioners that weren't here last year when we had. Folks from Calmer's coming give presentations. So they'll touch on that lightly and then they'll take it the next step forward in terms of what they've completed so far.
What we'll do is we'll have LRA, LRA first so that you can see that's the last. And then we'll return on May fifteenth with the chapter nine, environment, recreation and open space.
Mr. Bartlett, did you have something?
Oh, I just. I really liked it in solid ways. We had a whole section on composting and food waste. I, I really liked the way it was worded.
Right? Yeah, go ahead.
I know that we're not utilities commissioned and we don't want to approve or set rates and fees. But is there anything we can do to stop the increase of utility rates for people living on fixed incomes? That's increasing much faster than inflation for the last six years.
Don't take the coal plants offline.
Oh, what?
Don't take the coal plant offline.
Not the answer.
Very little of the power generation in the states from coal power plants.
So that's what's happened. But it's been that way for years. That's not, that doesn't explain the increase.
There are committees where you can actually go and speak related to the utilities with public works and they have their set committees that review utility rates.
With public works.
They, they actually did, they just combined them. It's easier now. It's all under one umbrella.
I think we TC's having some issues.
You get their notifications in your PSC bill, right? Of when they're having their meetings and. That you can.
Seems like there's a new announcement for a request for fee increase like every three weeks.
Yeah. And I always go online and I submit my comments to them. I don't know that it's necessarily good.
Barry's gonna go after that windmill nonetheless. All right. Okay, are we good to move on to general update? We feel like we've covered it.
Just one quick question because a lot came up with water and we are working specifically on water policies. That. Probably are going to end up in multiple chapters with the planning commission appreciate. Just a session, a work session on water, understanding that, you know. That breaking down the silos, having a work session that looks at it more holistically. And then, you know, us plugging it into the appropriate chapters.
Are you bringing the county's hydrogeologists in to give this presentation?
We actually have a policy person who works with Kevin now. So maybe Kevin, definitely Brian Benjamin. But they've been working closely along with Larry. Okay. On a whole suite of what we hope are more innovative, forward-thinking water policies.
What I'm hearing is that we might benefit from a consolidated water conversation.
Yes.
I think it would be easier to look at it in its entirety than to look at little pieces as they're broken out. And there isn't a chapter for water.
Isn't weird.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how this would, would work, but before I was a planning commissioner, I served on the surface stormwater advisory board. And the surface stormwater advisory board had a representative that then. Served on the conservation futures ranking committee and that was a, a fun project. In, along a similar lines. And I know that maybe you can influence the sum. It might be worthwhile if there was a planning commissioner. That served on the new water resources advisory board. So they could hear what's happening there and bring it back to the planning commission to say what's going on in that direction. Because I think that's going to be a very valuable board and having the two boards be able to communicate would be fantastic.
I don't know if there's a planning commission that wants to take on six additional meetings and a really heavy workload.
I know at least one that would.
I'm open to that. We have folks that sit on multiple boards and commissions or have it be more like an ex officio or something where you're. So yeah, let's, let's chat about that. Definitely open to it. Having those policy discussions with them now, it's kind of a new role that they'll be playing. Very excited for them to fill that role, but we're talking about, you know. Streamflow or policies related to streamflow restoration, water banking, sort of big picture stuff that isn't addressed in our comp plan at all right now. That's what we were thinking, but we want the planning commission to engage. Just trying to figure out the best way to do that is we talked about for each chapter, it's like, ah, but you'll lose that bigger picture if you just look at individual policies sprinkled throughout.
Well, and we're also going to keep saying the same thing over again because like so much of this is going to be relevant over and over again. I would love to have a section where we talk about water specifically. If we can fit that into our schedule. Both of those things and I nominate. Commissioner Casino to be that volunteer.
I think they got, they having, they having commissioned the water resources by three. It's not formalized yet.
We're working on the resolution right now. We had a lot of resolutions update. You were prior, the planning commission was prioritized as the first one. But we're still working through all the other advisory boards and.
Is that board going to be held under public works or under CPED? Oh, you get it.
Andy DePhobus is going to be the lead staff.
Better.
Bringing other folks to the table is necessary. So Larry will be there. We'll have folks from public works there. We'll have Brian Benjamin there.
Brian Benjamin was the one who came in about this.
Nisqually. So he's our lead, our policy lead on our.
Yeah, so and it sounds like you're. You're building that. Board currently.
Building that board and we will be recruiting or it's going to be expanded to probably twelve members. Most of which have backgrounds in water and the big lift that they're going to have next year is. Establishing the parameters of the new monitoring program for the shoreline, shoreline master. Shoreline master.
Program.
Monitoring. Anyway. Community piece.
So you can have travel rep on it?
We would love to have travel representation. It, it's hard to have them.
Everywhere.
So that's just a commitment of, for us to reach out.
In a similar vein, but opposite direction. We have a lot of elements of the comprehensive plan that have pretty significant DEY, DEI elements to them. And. Commissioner Fishburne tomorrow night is hosting an event or I should say moderating and. His organization is co-hosting, co-sponsoring, uh, event with local city and county. Representatives from equity commissions, et cetera. It seems to me that we could have potential opportunity for those. Commissions to potentially advise us. On comprehensive plan stuff that's related to DEI issues. Could we make that outreach a request?
Yeah, it's okay if I have Miriam reach out to you, Bill, to kind of find that point of connection.
Sounds like a potential subcommittee. Give them a volunteer.
All right. I feel like we've kind of gotten.
All right, I feel like we've kind of gotten, so are we into the twenty forty-five update, general update?
That was it.
Okay, that wasn't.
Figuring out how, how do we tackle water?
Yeah, yeah, okay. Great, thank you. Um, anything else there before we move on to, again, you with the staff update?
One minute off schedule, right? Very impressive.
Let's go.
We are still recruiting for our senior planner.
Oh.
Well, we, we had interviews. We're just in the process. Hope to know more by your next meeting. Fingers crossed. And Maya is gonna be coming back from maternity leave, so she will probably not be coming to planning commission meetings since she's still east coast. And now she's east coast with two young children under three, um, not getting any sleep. So she might make a, an appearance at the beginning of one meeting to just say hi. So those of you who don't know Maya can um, familiarize yourself with one of our rock star planners. Um, but yeah.
What program will she be running?
She's gonna come back and uh, help manage the comprehensive plan update. That's gonna be her primary. Keep that on track. It just keeps getting bigger and more unwieldy. So we need her master project management skills.
It's almost like it's comprehensive or something. All right, um, any other staff updates?
Nope, am I missing anything?
Okay.
No.
All right, well, thank you. And we will move on to the calendar and agenda items. All of a sudden, we are three minutes ahead. Um, we have two meetings upcoming. We have May first. It's a work session for uh, number thirteen for climate and housing, chapter ten, an analysis update. And that will be with the consultants.
And yes, they will not be here in person. We're gonna save that for when we start diving in to the actual chapter updates. Save, save us some money. So they'll be here virtually.
Um, and then we also have a second work session on the LRA code and public hearing. Still got that set. Um, who here knows that they will not be joining us?
Oh, it's May day. I will be here.
Yeah, same.
All right. This is free labor anyway.
I said that to my friends and they're like, you're talking about the maple thing? You're gonna dance around?
Yep, come in with a flower crown. It'll be great.
Not like a maple.
And then we have May fifteenth, uh, work session number fourteen um, of Thurston twenty forty-five, environment, recreation and open space. That is chapter nine. How does that look for folks?
That works for me. I'll be here.
It sounds like we'll have a full house, I would assume. All right, um, with that, we can move on to good of the order. Does anybody have items for good of the order? Mister Essinger?
Commissioner Essinger already spilled the beans on this, but I have shared it. That there is a DEI, uh, competition tomorrow with local leaders, jurisdictions represented will be City of Lacey, City of Olympia, City of Tumwater and Thurston County. Uh, and I was asked to moderate this, so I'll be playing referee, I guess, and taking audience questions both online and in the room. So if anybody's interested in how those um entities are handling DEI and what they've been doing for the last two years, I would encourage you to come by tomorrow. It's six to eight PM in this room. If you can stomach two nights, two nights in a row in the same place, it should be a lively conversation, I hope.
Will it be recorded for someone who might wanna go back and watch?
Record and the slides, it's, it's a, it's kind of an overview slide set that'll be available through the League of Women Voters. I should mention the sponsors are League of Women Voters. They're the ones that really spearheaded the Hispanic Roundtable and uh, APIC, South Puget Sound, Asian Pacific Islander Coalition of Washington State. Um, they're co-sponsoring League of Women Voters.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Pestinger.
So before we talk about the rules of procedure, if I beg a minute of your time, I, last time I gave an update about my road trips. It was Portland six times in a row and all their great Sony interesting things. Uh, this I came straight to this meeting from a thirteen day trip to Southern Oregon and Northern California and Nevada and I saw and spent some time in Napa Valley and I didn't realize uh, the effect of the hugeness of the two thousand seventeen fires. Um, two thousand eighteen fires became even bigger. The campfire might, might be most famously known, but the Napa fires in two thousand seventeen. Forty-four people lost their lives, eight thousand nine hundred structures were destroyed uh, in the campfires in two thousand eighteen and other associated California fires. It was over a hundred people lost their lives and over fifteen thousand structures were destroyed. Um, it, it is amazing again to see the impacts of Sony and planning on communities and the effects of rebuilding and the effects of wealth and interests in, in certain areas where they can make a big profit. Um, it's, I also visited uh, Lake Tahoe and I don't know if anyone's familiar, I certainly saw bumper stickers my entire drive that said keep Tahoe blue. I didn't know that much about what that meant. Um, has anyone ever seen this? I, anyone realizes that the campaign, it's been going for sixty-five years, started in nineteen fifty-seven? Maybe more than sixty-five years. Um, that, that's literally a group trying to make smart planning decisions, smart conservation decisions, learn uh, sustainability decisions, uh, and you know, while not perfect, uh, they've done some very interesting things. Um, they, I don't know if anyone's heard about a campaign that the city of Miami ran of a couple of years back that was basically like a very touristy affected, community touristy affected, tourism affected uh, industry and not unlike Tahoe. Uh, they basically ran a campaign that was like, hey, all you tourists, like it was great. We had a great run, but we're not that into you. It's not, not really working for us anymore. Let's do things a little different. We need this, this and this, instead of you just coming here and partying and trashing the place and all that. Uh, Tahoe is trying to do some similar things. I think, you know, while we in Thurston County are not just touristy, tourist driven, um, we certainly have some of that and we certainly have some things we could learn about protecting our water, uh, maintaining our water quality. And so I was uh, inspired along several parts of the path to uh, again, see the value to our local efforts here in the planning mission.
They have an exceptional water quality trading.
On the rules of procedure, uh, I just wanna check back in. I feel like we have a subcommittee. We made some recommendations. I've shared those with the whole planning commission. Uh, as far as I'm concerned, and I think our subcommittee is concerned, we now, the ball is now in the full planning commission's court. Um, but I don't know if we need to do something to move that forward next.
Hmm, I did confirm with Jeremy, our go-to person for process. Um, it does not appear that you need to do any sort of board adoption, so it will just be an official vote by the planning commission to confirm the new rules and procedures.
Okay, so would we wanna put that on the agenda for our next meeting?
Good idea.
We, we send out a final draft without the edits, literally just a, a stray copy. Uh, there, there were a couple of things where we had options and we expressed preferences, but there was not a final version that had that listed.
I agree.
So if we sent that out in advance, that way we saw the exact wording that we were proving at the next meeting, that would be ideal.
That makes sense. I don't know if I remember it well enough to make those changes myself to anyone. Feel comfortable doing, or you want me to just
Well, who has the rich, the document that we reviewed two weeks ago?
I do.
Okay.
I'm gonna make, take a stab at it and see what I can.
As long as we have a final or near final version, if there is any last minute tiny line items, I think we can approve as amended at the meeting, right?
That's fair.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I love you all, but I'm not listening to that audio.
If you had a transcript, you could ask AI.
Yeah, right.
Relive the, the two and a half hours. It's fun.
Actually, you could let AI just listen to it and walk away for a while.
Yeah, if you can do that for me, that'd be great.
All right, so we'll put it on the agenda for next meeting. Commissioner Passenger, you'll turn around a clean copy?
To Tasha.
For the
As soon as I can make it.
Okay, and you'll send that to Tasha. Tasha can set it up for the rest of us?
Indeed.
All right, um, do we have a timeline we want for that?
Up to everyone else, but I think ten, fifteen minutes should cover.
Okay.
Wasn't a lot of contentious stuff.
We've already talked out most of the points of contention anyway.
I think so too. All right, so we'll put that on the, the next agenda. And any more good of the order?
Uh, just thank you for suffering my CIP rant. I think you reminded of the traction you wanted though.
I'm just surprised you didn't stand and have your All right, um, having no other business, this meeting is adjourned.
Not think that would be the case when I saw.